Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017. We're going to start with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, Lord, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. We thank you, Father, for those who come out to discuss matters that are important to this community. We just pray, God, that you give us discernment and wisdom in our decision-making. And, Lord, that you and you alone be glorified. It's in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Thompson, do we have any Planning Commission announcements, change in orders, deferrals?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. We have received a letter from the applicant for your agenda item number 2, ZM 3491, the Peninsula at Golden Isles. The applicant is requesting a deferral of this item until your June 6, 2017, meeting.
Okay. And commissioners, will entertain a motion to defer this particular item?
Motion to defer.
Got a motion, got a second. Everybody in favor, signify by raising your right hand. It's deferred. And we will not be having a public hearing on this item tonight. I'd like the applicant to be here for it.
People that come to a public hearing, you know, hold it.
They will have plenty.
Citizens are going to get the idea that county planning doesn't care what citizens have to say about things that affect them.
They will have the opportunity in June. They'll address certain items and we'll discuss it at that time and move on. So we'll move on to our next general business item, approving the minutes of the special called meeting held April 10, 2017. Subject to any necessary corrections.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, second? Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Very good. Next item, public hearing zoning applications, ZM 3463, Capital Square. Consider amendments to the plan development text to increase the maximum building height, modify the sign regulations, amend buffer requirements, and update the agent information. Parcel ID 03-03351 and 03-12452. Chris Amos with CSEC, Inc., Agent for Southern Real Property, Inc., Ridge Enterprises, and Preon Milan Enterprises, LLC, owners and applicant.
Good evening again. This information is in your packet and to let you know, ZM 3463 is the same property that relates to your next agenda item, SP 3439. And you do have a full size of that site plan in the back of your packet, so if you want to refer to that while you are looking at this presentation. So they are requesting an amendment to the plan development text for this property to increase maximum building height, modify the sign regulations, amend buffer requirements, and to update the agent information. To let you know, they did amend their application to make an additional request regarding some alcohol restrictions that were in the original text. And staff inadvertently left that off of the legal ad and the letters to the neighbors, so we have worked with them and that will come back to you next month. We didn't want to put that through without the proper legal notifications.
I understand.
You see before you the six questions that are considered when we're considering, you all are considering whether or not to amend PD text. There are no changes to the allowed use. Basically, the height requirement is not habitable area where they are requesting the height variance or the change. Oh, I apologize. So there's the location map. This is off of exit 38. There's the aerial photograph. You have an updated plan in your packet. It is 28.4 acres. It's undeveloped. It is proposed for La Quinta. And you can see there the development standards for this current, for the property. The applicant's requesting the following modifications: update the agent information, change the development standards and densities to a commercial building height from 60 foot to 66, and retain the language that the height approval is subject to approval from the fire chief or state fire marshal, signage for the development, and that buffers, right now, all perimeter boundaries shall have a 10-foot perimeter buffer unless such buffers are waived by the Mainland Planning Commission at time of site plan approval. I apologize, I jumped that slide ahead. So there are the six things that are applicable. The zoning proposal conforms to the regional center as identified on the future land use map. There are no proposed changes to the allowed use. And your possible motions are on that slide. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant and agent are here tonight.
One thing I noticed in Section C, where they have the modification to the zoning, it just says that it's up to 66 feet, subject to approval of the fire chief. It doesn't say that it's 66 feet, you know, was, or 60-foot is for the inhabitable area. It doesn't have the verbiage on there. And I'm afraid somebody later is going to come on somewhere else on the parcel and they'll go to the 66-foot for living area and...
Okay. And we had talked about that and talked about it with the fire chief, so you're welcome to direct us to make that express in that condition or in that change to add that in.
To the zoning text itself.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I think that was the only comment I had on it at the moment. Any questions for the staff?
The setback, is that just for the one particular area, whether it's a sidewalk out back, setback variance?
That's going to be during the site.
Yes, sir. They're not amending the setbacks for the PD text, which is what this is doing, is amending the text that applies to the property.
Okay. And this is just for the building height only, the zoning amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions for staff?
Ms. Thompson, the 10-foot buffer, if, the way I read this, and please correct me, the current texts state 20 feet? Is that the current buffer?
10 feet.
10 feet.
Is the current. And part of this is through any site plan that comes through, through regularly zoned property, y'all have the ability at time of site plan consideration to make certain variances. And so this was just putting in that language so that you have that ability that's given on other properties now.
Okay. So basically, we would not be able to go beyond the 10 feet, but we could allow for a greater distance than 10 feet in the rear. Is that the way I understand it?
No, what they're asking, right now, the zoning, they're not dealing with buffers at all on this, what we're about to discuss further and vote on. The next item for the site plan approval will be for variance on the side buffers?
Okay. So I've gotten ahead of myself here, so I apologize.
Well, we include both so that you've got the site plan to consider the zoning, so you can tend to talk about both of them at the same time. But this is the one that requires a public hearing, and we did send out notices to the neighbors.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to please come forward and request action?
Yes, Chris Amos with CSEC Incorporated, as agent for the owners. I also have the, one of the owners, the Hotel Development, and the Director of Architecture and Construction from La Quinta here tonight, in case you have any questions regarding the building and the building height issues. But what we would certainly like for you to do is to approve the zoning as amended by the comments on the building height to the commercial space and the 66 feet limited to those things that she's got written in the staff comments.
For architectural features?
Architectural features. And what we have, and I can show you this.
It's not for the living area.
This is, this is a grid roof at the front of the hotel. And the portion that's extending up above 60 feet is this portion here with the signage on it, and that's not habitable space up there. So the first thing that I did when this came up is I went and met with the fire marshal. He reviewed the plans to make sure that he didn't have any issue with that 60, with the area above 60-foot. So he was the first one to sign off, I believe.
Is that just dead space?
I'm sorry?
Is that just dead space?
Yeah. It's basically, yeah, spaces.
If you would, please come forward, state your name and who you're with, for the record.
My apologies. David Hildebrand. I'm the Director of Design and Construction at La Quinta Hotels. And that space right there, prototypically, is just mainly framing for that tower, the tower, that part that extends above. And so beyond that, what you see actually in the facade is going to be no more than framing. There'll be some ventilation on the backside for that and, you know, access to the signage so you can replace it and modify some of those things that are there, but no habitable space.
No elevator?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So if it was 6 feet lower, what would that change? Other than a looks? We're just talking aesthetics, correct, Chris?
I believe if it were 6 feet lower, then it doesn't meet their standards for the signage and for the prototype of the building.
It does modify some of the way that the roof is processed and established. Additionally, the way that the building design is maintained throughout the prototypical, throughout the brand, is, it does alter that appearance slightly. We do like to have that main primary tower as a, more of a higher presence than the other secondary tower that we have on the opposite side of the building. And so the closer you get to that, you start to blend some of those architectural elements. So in light of having, like you mentioned, the more of the aesthetic feature of that prominence of that tower is really what it comes down to.
And truly, if it's not putting anyone in that structure in jeopardy or blocking the view of any other structures around there, which it certainly would not, then it, I can't see it to be a problem for me. Now, well, like I said, not habitable, and we're not increasing the entire site as far as heights requirement. Pardon?
No storage or anything. Okay.
Is it all four sides or just three sides?
Three sides. It'd be U-shaped.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're here to answer the question.
Okay. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none? Anybody wishing to speak against this application? Seeing none. Commissioners? Entertain a motion? Mr.?
I move to approve the proposed zoning decision as presented.
With a modification, what we've asked for is... Do you have some more specific verbiage on it? But it's just for the architectural features. It's not for habitable space. It's a...
Additional 6 feet?
Yes. Yeah. Everything else is going to be subject to 60-foot. It's just that these architectural features, where the signage is going, the portage can be the additional 60, 6 feet, excuse me.
I recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision.
I'm sorry, I had to find the page. If you'd like, I'm happy to proffer.
Actually, I think you've got it right here on the bottom.
Okay.
In the heavier print.
Yeah, if you could raise it up some.
How can I do that? I T., how can I raise up the wording?
I think we can see it.
I think we can read it. Is that the end of it? Mainland Planning Commission's the last line? Are we sure?
Yes, that's what it says.
I recommend approval of application ZM 3463 with the following modification: maximum commercial building height shall be 60 feet. A portion of the building may extend up to 66 feet in height to accommodate signage, architectural feature variance, variation, elevators, et cetera, upon approval by us.
By the Mainland Planning Commission.
They said there won't be elevators going down, wouldn't they?
Correct. That's something you would address at site plan, but that's just the wording for the PD text.
I second.
Got a motion, a second? Further discussion? All in favor? Signify by raising your right hand. Unanimous? All right. Thank you.
And again, you will see ZM from them again next month due to the staff oversight of not advertising the last request that they made. So please don't think they weren't completing their application. We just didn't get it properly noticed, and we wanted to make sure people knew what all was being considered.
Okay. Next item, site plan approvals. SP 3439, La Quinta del Sol Hotel. Consider site plan approval for an 88-room hotel on 100 Capital Square Drive, located off Perry Lane Road, near exit 38. The property is currently zoned plan development. Parcel ID 03-12452. Chris Amos with CSEC, Inc., Agent for Preon Milan Enterprises, LLC, owner and applicant.
Thank you. Again, this is the site plan that was located in your packet. This is the location of the property off of exit 38. These are photographs of the property as it is today. It's 3 acres. It is zoned PD, the one you just recommended to the Board of Commissioners to amend. It's undeveloped, is proposed for a hotel, and the comp plan does call for this to be a regional center. We will now go through the site plan requirements. And these numbers here are the site plan requirements in our regulations, and we're showing you on the plat where those are met. We provided you more detail in your staff report in your packet. And I don't want to go so fast as to get anyone carsick, so please feel free to slow me down if need be.
You want us to count along as you do?
Yeah. This is the front elevation, the side elevation. And again, this is with the approved height variance that's being recommended to the Board of Commissioners. Rear elevation. That's where you can see the buffers in the parking area. And that is the seal of a registered professional engineer. So your possible motions are to approve site plan 3437 as presented. And I would like to point out that they have requested some of the variances that y'all can approve in concert with a site plan approval. This would be pending approval by the Board of Commissioners of the PD text amendment, the site plan approval. The buffer requires, it's 10-foot buffer along all property lines. However, the applicant has requested an exemption from this buffer requirement for the side buffers. Again, pending approval of that planning development text amendment. Chris, is that the only?
That is the parking.
The parking. And they're requesting the parking reduction in accordance with increasing their open space area, and that is on the back portion of the property, the increased pervious space.
Is that the total number of parking spots, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. There's a, there's a method by which you can reduce that in exchange for the open space, and they are requesting that.
You were going to say, how do we monitor the green space if they come back and request to do some additional construction in the back?
We will pull out the site plan and see that it's noted and pull out this approval. They're required to have 101 spaces, and they would like to provide 97 spaces.
No problem. Can't the, can't your department grant them a 10%?
Yes, sir, I can. It was coming through as a site plan, so we would want y'all to have the opportunity to see everything on the site plan at once.
What about the 10-foot buffer along the street? Type E buffer, 10-foot, under 13.3 G2 they talk about along the street when there's more than 10 parking spaces. And it may be the interpretation of that rule that the 10s, I don't know if that's 10 spaces for the site or 10 spaces that would join the, to the front of the right away. That's where the wording in there is a little funny, but I know we made Harbor Freight, which is on Towne-Tama Avenue, put a 10-foot buffer. I don't know if they ever complied, but...
You know, we didn't consider it, for example, that's something we always apply if it's a pool house or the clubhouse or something, and it has its own parking area versus like the parking into an apartment. We did have the buffer along there. That's definitely something that we can discuss with the applicant if you think there needs to be more planting there. Planting staff did review it and determined that, that what was shown was adequate for our site plan.
Okay. Because I know it specifically states in buffers on the front, 10 feet, if you have more than 10 parking spaces. So, and we held other folks feet to the fire on that, on some previous. So the variance is just for that one area where there's a sidewalk coming off the back? Is that correct for the 10-foot? They're wanting a, on the two sides of it, which would be, I guess, the north and the south property line?
Yes. So as you're looking at this, it's the top and the bottom.
Yeah, the top and the bottom. They want to go away with the easements on it. One side, we have a lake on it, and you're, I'm not sure what you're going to buffer from the lake. And on the south side, I'm assuming it's probably going to be, it's zoned the same thing, and I don't believe, actually, buffers are required against like zoning, so... And the reason this didn't go through the subdivision regulations is because it's 3 acres? To create the parcel? Or did it?
Yeah, the parcel already existed.
Oh, okay. All right. No problem.
No, thank you for your thorough explanation. And this is not a public hearing. The property was posted 12 days before the meeting, and the agent and applicants are here if you have any additional questions.
Okay. I do have additional questions.
Okay.
Any more questions for staff?
I'm still trying to figure this 10-foot setback. Where is it? On here, it appears, on the plan, it appears to have 10-foot setback all the way around.
It does, but their PD text said that there had to be all plantings versus, right now, it would not be a planted buffer. They would have had to have trees and shrubs and all that in that.
It's this line and this line. They're going to keep a 20-foot in the back, okay? Against the Board of Education.
Did we talk to you all about the front?
Okay. So there's a lake out here on the north side? Right there. Existing pond.
That's it. Okay. It's like a salt coming in here.
Yeah.
Okay.
That pond backs up to Kate's Bounty.
Yeah. Nothing. It's just open field right now. This is just offset slightly from the interstate.
I gleaned that. All right. So how are we going to justify the fact that the north elevation has nothing? Plantings have been so...
Mr. Murphy, if I could, typically, buffers are, the purpose of them is to separate one use from a different use, sometimes non-compatible. This whole area, like Mr. Neville said, to the south is zoned the same thing, and to the north, it is an existing lake, not any type of housing or residential or different land use that would need to be shielded from the hotel site.
Yeah, the pond's not the issue.
Okay.
It's the other side. Because, just because that piece of property to the south of them is zoned currently, doesn't mean it's going to stay that way forever. And that's the problem with buffers. Buffers tend to outlast the zoning of the property that surrounds it. So you come back 15 years later and you go, well, how come there's no buffer on that existing hotel property?
Yes, sir.
And here we are, having to live with the traffic going to the front of their building. So that's the concern, is not today, it's long-term.
Yes, sir. And that's absolutely something y'all can consider, and that's what Mr. Amos is asking you today. The other thing is that if someone came in to rezone that property to the south, we would absolutely be aware of it, and if it were a different use, would recommending buffering of that property.
So make them take it.
He would assume the expense associated with the buffer where this property did not.
That's the balance, and that's what they're asking you to consider tonight. And that's absolutely within your purview to consider that.
I just can't wait to hear Chris's excuse on this. It's going to be a good one.
Okay. And to say that, he's requested the buffer on the north and the south side, you can grant just one of those if you think the buffer on the north is appropriate and not grant it on the south side. So I will turn it over to the agent, unless you have any more questions.
Would the agent please come forward and request action?
Well, let's talk about the buffer real quick first.
And you are?
Chris Amos with CSEC Incorporated, agent for the owners. Sorry. If you'll look on the south side of this building, we've got, we had a pretty significant utility issue trying to get all the utilities and storm drainage onto this site. One of the things that we did in working with Joint Water Sewer is we are extending an 8-inch water main down the south side of the property, on the adjoining property, and then providing an easement on the west side of the property that will ultimately go back into that subdivision, connect into the water system and the subdivision, so that we provide another loop connection into the, into the water system serving this commercial area. Right now, this line is on a dead end, and this would let us loop the thing in with another. So for that reason, we've got a 15-foot buffer outside of our property that has an 8-inch water main in it. I've got a force main, I've got a sanitary sewer line, I've got a storm drainage line, and I've got the pavement and the domestic water line all on this one side of the building.
You said you had an 8-foot buffer for the water line. Is that a buffer or an easement?
I said an easement. I'm sorry. I meant easement. If I said buffer, I misspoke. It's a 15-foot easement. We have a 15-foot utility easement that's been granted by the adjoining property owner to put that water line in.
That's what the dash line and the stippling behind it is? That's all easement area?
Yes, that's easement area. That is correct. In addition to that, there's a little easement around that cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Because the cul-de-sac wasn't properly configured from a right-of-way standpoint. When it's extended, that easement will go away. That easement will sunset. So we need a temporary easement around the cul-de-sac, and then the easement for the water line is to get the water line extended back into the subdivision at some point in the future. So when we do all of that, there really is no room for a buffer on that side. And as Pamela mentioned, that is a commercially zoned piece of property next door. And it's surrounded by commercial property next to the interstate interchange. I don't anticipate that it's going to be in anything other than another commercial piece of property in the future. So with the lake on one side, obviously, we've, you've discussed that. We've got a 20-foot buffer adjacent to the Board of Education property where the school is. In addition to that, we have a cedar fence that runs along the rear property line and runs part the way up both north and south property lines on the rear of the property.
How tall is that cedar fence?
Do you remember how tall that cedar fence is?
I think it's, I think that's right. I think it's 7 feet tall.
And it's actually designed in a U shape?
Yes, it is.
The buffer requirements, they also call for 10-foot along the front when they have more than 10 parking spaces?
And we have plenty of room up there to call that a buffer. All of those areas that are in the front are landscaped. There's no, there's no structures up there other than a double-check detector valve assembly for the water connection. Everything else is landscaping, signage, flagpoles.
Well, that was another thing. I noticed in the larger oval area where it says 10-foot building setback on the front, right adjacent to the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
There's a little square right, it passes over into the word setback.
Yeah, we're going...
Is that the sign?
We have, if you notice, it's not labeled. So we have to go through, we have to go through the sign ordinance to get all the signage approved. So I'm aware that we've got to move that sign back out of the setback, yes. That was an oversight on my part. I apologize.
And no problem.
I don't think, we didn't, I didn't have the building setback line turned on whenever we were plotting this out the first time.
And I know signage is a separate application, so we won't see it, but... Okay. So you would allow or entertain a type E buffer along the front, which is the 10-foot?
What is type E? I don't remember exactly.
It's type E. It's what's required for commercial in the front when you have 10 parking spaces.
It's all landscaping?
Yes.
There's no fencing?
And a certain number of trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we have trees up there already.
Yeah, it's not too...
I don't think that's, I don't think that's an issue.
Well, you got a couple drives which really reduce the number of areas where you can plant also, so you're not looking at a... Hold on, through there. But we have made other people stick to that.
I understand.
Application, so... Okay.
That said, we would certainly hope that you would approve our application as submitted.
Do you have any plans for the Logan's Restaurant? Front of it?
I'm not sure what's happening with the Logan's Restaurant. I've tried to make contact with them on several occasions to coordinate some utility work, and I can't even get a call back, so I'm not sure what they're doing. Do you have any other questions?
Uh, not at the moment. I think we're going to have a little discussion here about buffers, I think.
Oh, boy.
Along the north and south property line.
We know that.
They got a pond there, be a nice feature, I mean, as far as viewing it.
Can't go along there, yeah.
Yeah, and on the south side, they will have similar commercial endeavors.
Does that cedar fence run the entire length of the south side?
No.
No, it's just like a U shape.
Up to the dumpster, or just cover the dumpster, yeah. And depending on who comes in next door, they may do something a little more flamboyant, but we've got a 15-foot easement area for the water line also.
I can see difficulties trying to get it in with all the utilities, but I still think we're setting the adjacent owner up for some difficulties if, with, uh, no plantings or anything in there.
Well, they do have a water line. I know utilities are allowed in there, but plantings in a, I don't think joint water and sewer would entertain that.
I don't either, right.
And more likely, where, well, where this is at, what other kind of use are you going to put there besides the, this similar commercial? It's near the interstate.
I mean, the only thing you could do there is put a fence and it'd look terrible. I mean, it would, it'd pin you in against that building coming around there. It would be awful.
There will be some space through there because they won't, I believe, be allowed to build over that 15-foot easement.
Right.
JWC, they'll have to maintain that water line. So you'll have a, some area, but it'll probably be grassed, it's zoned, low shrubs, that sort of thing. And also the reduction in the parking. So they got plenty of green space out there already.
Can always park on the putting green.
True.
No, I don't see any other way around that.
Very, and I know when we did the Home Depot, they, I think, reduced theirs by about 20 spaces because they said we absolutely don't need that many, and I don't think I've ever seen their parking lot full unless there's, uh...
No, it's never been.
They got sheds and trucks and raining and things like that, so I think clients probably got a better idea of...
That's my second home, so I know.
Well, that reduction was what, just roughly about four spaces, was it?
Yeah.
101 down to 97, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that's...
450 square feet per space, I think, is required.
Yeah, I think they should be commended for giving it the 15-foot easement to have the water main put in there.
Absolutely.
Um, that in itself.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of the only thing that steers me towards recommended approval.
Yep. Chris knew that too, you know? He knew that we were sentimental. He didn't do something special for the community that we would come down on, so. You can't hear that out there, can you?
I'm sure joint water and sewer probably relishes the idea of giving, them being, giving water mains and everything else too, so.
Well, I'm content.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. Now, this is going to be for approval of the site plan, the variance in the parking, and the two buffers, I believe, and the addition of the 10-foot type E buffer on the front.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application SP 3439 as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a problem, because that says 39, but then the motion says 37.
I apologize, it is 3439.
Ah, very good.
Thank you very much for catching that.
Bill, if you would amend it also to add the type E buffer on the front, on the right of way?
Your motion?
Yeah, I move to approve application SP 3439 as presented, along with the type E buffer along the front.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Do we want to change also the parking?
That was as presented, correct?
Correct. Those variance requests were in presented.
And then the north and south.
North and south and the parking variance were part of that.
Just wanted to make sure, I'm not going to leave it out.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Signified by raising your hand, right hand. That's unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That being said, anything else? Ms. Thompson?
No, sir, that's it for us.
All right, we've got a meeting next Tuesday at 10:30 JWSC and at 3 o'clock at the here.
Yes, sir. You all have two special call joint meetings with the Islands Planning Commission Tuesday, May 9th, 10:30 a.m. at the Joint Water and Sewer Offices to hear a presentation from them about their capacity issues and their plans for their utility system. And then at 3 p.m. Tuesday, May 9th, here in the historic courthouse, you will hold a joint meeting with the Islands Planning Commission to consider four zoning amendments.
Okay, and...
Are we voting on those?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Those packages, well, you said zoning.
Three zoning and one subdivision, and I will get those packets to you tomorrow for your consideration.
Well, I thought there was some ordinance amendments that we were going to look at. One for the public comment on, uh...
Before the meetings.
Items other than...
Yes, sir. The items that'll be before you on May 9th at the 3 p.m. meeting will be amending the zoning and the subdivision ordinances respectively to allow for public comment...
Okay.
On any item before either planning commission. One zoning ordinance amendment to increase the total number of dogs and/or cats allowed from the current maximum of three up to six, and an amendment to the zoning ordinance to change the sign ordinance, to amend the sign ordinance portion for how canopy signs on gas stations, how those signs are counted, and the medallion signs on the face of the building.
Okay.
Since we're going to need a quorum...
No, and that information, that'll be delivered to us? Or are we, just what we got emailed?
Were the four zoning amendments emailed to you? I'm sorry, I've been in and out, and I know I had Janet email some things. Did she email the zoning amendments?
I think we got just the agenda items was all and not the actual...
Okay. We will email those amendments to you tomorrow, and if anyone needs a hard copy packet, please just let Janet know, and we'll have that printed out and sent to you.
Okay.
It's, it's about 12 pages total, all four of the items.
Okay. Not 1,200.
Are we going to have to wait until 3 o'clock to find out if we're going to have a quorum present?
I'm happy to ask Ms. Loving if she can email or call ahead to both planning commissions to get a head count for both of those meetings.
What's going to be your cutoff time?
The reason I say that, there's people like myself that work on the island and just to come, you know, from...
Yes, sir. Twice, yes, sir.